I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Madam Eide Public School, Independent School District 832. It is a regular, you know, it's a special organizational meeting on Monday, January 6th, 2025 at 7 o'clock PM. Please rise and join me for the Fudge of the.
The Fudge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Full call of attendance.
Done.
Approval of the agenda.
I'm moved.
By Director Regan.
Second.
Second by Director Domon. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda. Make the motion.
No move.
Moved by Director Domon.
Second.
Second by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Organizational matters.
Okay, so I have a few board members to swear in right now, and before I can do that, I have a very long thing I need to read to you. So I'm gonna go to the podium, and I'm going to read, and if, I guess I'll call you Director Stout, Director Regan, and at this point, Mr. Dr. Whitson, I'm not sure exactly what to call, duly, duly elected, okay, sorry. Will you come and join me up, up there while I swear you? Sorry, I didn't practice that.
Okay, so first, I have something to read before I administer the oath of office. So, it was an, it is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office this evening, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for the equitable quality education of every student in the Madam Eide School District. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the Madam Eide Public Schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, you serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the administration and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office for a term beginning Monday, January 6th, 2025, and expiring the first Monday in January, sorry, this does not read 2029, you will please publicly affirm your commitment by raising your right hand and repeating the oath of office after me. Okay, you ready? I, and then your name, so. Swear that I will support. And you can all do it together, the Constitution of the United States. And the State of Minnesota. And that I will discharge faithfully. The duties of the Office of School Board Member. Of Independent School District 832. To the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move to election of officers. And we did send out a proposed. Organizational meeting. And so at this time, are there any nom, so we can do it where we, we elect Chair Person, Vice Chair and Clerk and Treasurer independently, or we can do it as a slate. It's up to whoever wants to make a nomination. And we typically put our Vice Chair and Clerk as one person, because clerk is required by law, the position of clerk. Vice Chair is, is not one that's required, so the roles seem to complement each other and doesn't make sense to have two different people doing that one, those two different roles, so we make it Vice Chair slash Clerk. So with that, are there any nominations?
Madam Chair. I'll move to propose that Director Stout serve as Chair, Director Regan serve as Vice Chair and Clerk. I'll move that slate together, and I think, and we can certainly discuss Treasurer after this motion.
Okay. Should we, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, thank you for your nomination.
And I'm happy. Say that three times?
Yes, we do, thank you. And I, do I repeat it three times? Okay, so. There has been a nomination for Stacy Stout as Chair, Kelly Regan as Vice Chair and Clerk. And I will state it one more time, there's been nomination for Stacy Stout as Chair.
Say, are there any other nominations?
Oh, yes, are there any other nominations? It's been a while since we've done this. Oh, that's what I say three times, are there any other nominations? Okay, so we will take a vote on this slate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, I appreciate your confidence in me. And Kelly? Okay, so now for Treasurer. There were two people who expressed interest. Do either of you want to speak to that, or do either of you feel strongly about the position of Treasurer?
I didn't know. I personally don't have a huge preference, I'm happy to fill the role. I also think that between Stacy, Kelly, and Paul, we've had an extremely, extremely high-functioning board for the last year, and so I'm very supportive of keeping the roles the same, so that's my opinion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, I propose that Ryan, Director Domon, serve as Treasurer, and I, I think it'd be, I, I'm happy to continue to serve, but I think it'd be great to just have another set of eyes. It's always good to have another set of eyes, go through some things and ask questions, et cetera, so. I'm, I'm happy to have Ryan serve that position. Now nominate Director Domon for Treasurer.
Now, second, oh, okay, we have a second from Director Peterson. Are there any other nominations? So we currently have Ryan Domon nominated for Treasurer. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, with that, we will take a vote. All those in favor, Ryan Domon for Treasurer, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, now we will move toward, to our consideration of board member appointments. So if you'll look at the form, everyone should have it in front of you. Thank you, everyone, for reading through the different roles. As you know, we all serve, obviously, we have our meetings where we come here and our study sessions, but we also really try to be engaged in all the other areas of the district, and also some, some organizations outside of our district, such as the School Board Association and, and other ones like that. So, I appreciate everyone identifying their interest. I tried, Barb and I worked through it and tried to keep it where it's even, so that the workload is even for everyone, while also honoring the wishes of everyone, and I think we're pretty close. So I'll just walk through it, and then if, if somebody wants to add something, or if you see something that we missed, or something you prefer to do, then just speak up, and I think.
And, and I'll just add, look at the commitment that's written in red there, too, so that you can see if the time commitment works for you. In particular, some of them have certain dates associated with them, so just check and see that those, those dates will work for you as well.
So we'll start with Facilities Committee. Last year it was Ryan, Jenny, and Kelly. This year it's, we've proposed Ryan, Kelly, and Drew. Any questions? Yes.
Can you clarify where, when the Elementary PTO typically meet, you said on Wednesdays?
It's the second Wednesday of every month in the OHA flex room.
Oh, okay. So we'll get, we'll get to that one, and we can talk about it. Yeah, okay. Okay, so Facilities Committee, Ryan, Kelly, and Drew. The Finance Committee, Ryan, Paul, and Drew, which makes sense, because as Treasurer, you will be on the Finance Committee. Paul will remain on there, so, and then Drew, you'll be the newest member, so that's great. Any questions? Policy Committee, Paul, Jenny, and, and me, Stacy. Okay. Everybody good there? Okay, for Advisory Boards, we've got AMSD, and Paul will take that on. Minnesota School Board Association, Jenny will continue in that role, and Minnesota State High School League, Ryan will continue in that role.
Does that work? That was one, the Friday, the first Friday of the month, those meetings are also, they are hybrid, so if you can't make it to Quora for those meetings, you can do them online. But does that work for you to, to do those mornings, they're 7:30 or so in the morning?
Yep.
Then for Governing Board Appointments, Integration District, the Educational Equity Alliance, that is Kelly will be taking that. For the MAEF, Kelly will also have, be the representative on that. Then for the Metro Educational Cooperative Service Unit, that's EXU, we have listed Drew, and I think.
I can speak to that one, because it only, there's only one meeting each year that the representative, it's, the Delegate Assembly is invited, and so there's one board member from each district that's invited. It's an evening meeting, I don't recall, I want to say it's typically in April, but I'll have, I can look into that one. It's not required, but what they'll do, as a member of our Service Co-op, they, they go through a lot of the programs that we are part of, that we benefit from our membership, so it kind of is an opportunity for that, and then they should, they do, they share the budgets and, and that kind of thing as well, so it, it gives a, it's, and again, it's just one a year. I typically go as well, and so if the board, a board member can't make it, well, if you can't make it, I can also bring you up to speed on that as well.
And also for any of these, if you're not able to make it, you just ask another board member and find somebody, one of us will say yes to cover any meeting that needs to get covered. For Northeast Metro 916, I will do that one. And then we have the Committees. For Calendar Committee, I will continue to do that along with Ryan, that's about twice a year. Community Education Advisory, Paul will do that. District Curriculum Advisory Committee will be Kelly. And then Elementary PTO, I think we said Drew, but if that doesn't work, then is that, that works for your calendar? Okay. Advanced Academic Parent Group will be Jenny, and Special Ed Advisory will be Ryan. Everybody good with that? And that meets about once or twice a year. Okay, so, does anyone have anything to add, or any changes? Oh, yes. But again, if you can't make it, one of us, I mean, we are always, there's always, we all, yeah, have to ask once. Okay, were there any that people wanted to discuss, because you really wanted one, or anything I missed? Okay, that was easy. Then we need to, we vote on it, or is it?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as the slate, all of the board member appointments as listed in the document.
Second.
Moved by Director Regan, second by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, thank you all. For, oh, we have to address the Policy 202.1, that's School Board Compensation. Barb, do you want to?
Well, I can, so see, each year, you are required to essentially set the stipends that you receive. It's been, it, our history has been that we use the average of 916 districts, so our, sorry, it's Rachel Anderson from nine, so she, she is the Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent of 916, I'm sorry, I lost that for a second. She puts together this document that you see here of all the compensation for each district in 916, that's in the board book, and we simply take the average, and that's the number you typically approve. So that's what's, that's what's listed here. And so if you can, if you want to continue, you just need to approve those, those numbers as listed in that document. Chair would be 6,408. Vice Chair Clerk would be 5,925. Treasurer would be 5,871, and Directors would be 5,770.
So we need a motion on adopting Policy 202.1, School Board Compensation.
I'm moved.
Moved by Director Peterson.
Second.
Second by Director Donna. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, and then we need to, look at our School Board Member Calendar. Does anyone have anything they'd like to call out? Yes, Director Peterson?
Three things, can I do them all at once?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, there is a coffee and conversation tomorrow morning, I can't do it, so if someone wants to listen in and just shoot me a little message if there's anything fantastic. I am attending MSBA State Conference next Thursday, is anybody else gonna, will I see anyone there?
I'm out of town.
Lunch with you, you're there all day? No, no, and no? Okay, oh, you're out of town. And then I see the Gifted and Talented is meeting, I haven't seen an email personally on that, is that to reschedule from the snow day last week? I mean, before Christmas? I don't know.
There it, yeah, okay, that might not be it, thank you. Okay.
Regarding the coffee and conversation, where is that, when is that?
She's referring to MSBA Coffee and Conversation.
Got you, okay.
Two Tuesdays a month.
Got you, perfect.
The link came out in the email. I saw the email, I think, was it yesterday or some, we got that link.
Comes out, yes. It came out early this morning for tomorrow morning.
Okay.
But we, and although Jenny's our point of contact, anyone can attend those at any point.
Just letting you know, I won't be on, so.
And then I'll just point out, we do have a School Board Study Session next Monday, so we have a lot going on this year, so we're trying to add meetings all covered. And I think, I don't have anything else to point out.
I have one other question. Is the January 31st, I just saw city leaders to be determined, I just want to know if that was happening, because I wanted to make sure I was back, if that, it just says TBD.
Yeah.
So. Okay, great.
This Wednesday, there's the Madam Eide PTO Meeting, I think that's the committee that I'm on.
Yeah.
Yep, I will not be here. Is there someone who would be able to attend in my stead on Wednesday evening?
For which one?
Seven to 8:30.
Perfect.
Sure. One more thing, that's okay. February 6th, District Curriculum Advisory, I'm looking for somebody to be able to fill in for that date, I will be traveling that week.
What day of the week is that?
Five to 6:30.
About a town that day.
What day is it?
Six.
No idea.
We'll look.
Okay, otherwise, I'll just reach out to you individually. How about if Leslie sends out an email asking? Okay, all right.
If I can, I'll do it. Okay. Okay. I think that's it for now. Okay. For the calendar. We need to vote on it?
I'm just looking at the calendar online right now, and it doesn't look like the study, next study session is listed. I don't know if that needs to be.
Where is it not listed?
Through the public website, click on the School Board Meeting Schedule. Oh, it did? So you're not on it yet?
Leslie, she keeps us all in line, so that, that makes sense, we had to prove it before it goes online, okay. So that was in our consent agenda that we added it. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, then now for action items. Anything else?
We have one action item. We want to acknowledge, we have, as Tim makes his way up, this won't be very long, but it's also maybe not super interesting to the, to the group that came this evening. I, I don't want you to have to stay for everything, but it was really great that you came to witness the swearing in, so it was nice to have you, so thank you.
Okay, welcome, Tim, Happy New Year.
Well, Happy New Year to all of you, and congratulations to new board member and, and newly re-elected board member, so, yeah, kind of an exciting night. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a lot of exciting stuff for you tonight. So what we're, what we're gonna do here is, we'd like the board to approve an updated resolution, parameters resolution for that bond refunding. Rates have changed, unfortunately, they, they popped up a little bit, they're up and down every day, and we're, so what we're doing is putting a 3.7% true interest cost in, where we had a 3.15. So that's the, that's basically the only change on this resolution. I did share a little bit of additional information. When we looked at, today there were some sales, and that's what we were waiting for, is to see what the three recent sales at Ellers was doing, what they, what they panned out to be. So I think when we're looking at the Cloquet School District, that one is probably more relative to what we're talking about, same, approximately same size issue, that type of thing. That had a true interest cost of 3.23, so not too far off of our mark. We just need to have a little bit of room, so we don't have to come back here again and re, and have you re-approve another parameters resolution. Our, our sale date is looking, we're looking at January 22nd. We're also going to do an additional disclosure through the law firm of Dorsey and Whitney, they'll be doing a disclosure opinion, and that will give, hopefully give investors additional confidence in our issue, so our bond issue, not any issues that we have, but bond issue. Let's see, what else? We'll be, one of the things we'll be doing is reinvesting during the time period between the closing of the new bond issue, and when we have to redeem the old bond issue, is about 35 days. We'll invest those in government securities, state and local government securities, which are yielding around 4.14, 4.4%, somewhere in there. So that'll generate some interest of approximately $93,000, which will help offset our costs of issuance, so that's, that's good news. I think overall, when we looked at last week, we looked at, you know, restructuring what we're doing, so still trying to aim for, you know, tax impacts and that type of thing, which would relative, be relatively the same as what we had been talking about before, so, all in all, pretty good news, except for the, you know, the kind of, the tick up in rates, but again, they're down today, they were down, so that's good. Any questions?
I have a question, I apologize if this is something that you guys all understand already, I don't truly understand how the process works, could you just take a moment and explain it to me like a second grader? Like, I don't understand, are we subject to whatever the, the proposed or the best rate is on the day that we go to market, or like?
So, and, and that's a good question, it is, yeah. This stuff isn't straightforward, it, it does get a little complicated. But if I just start with the resolution, so, the resolution is called a parameters resolution, because you as a board are agreeing to let the Superintendent and another board member, or myself and another board member, decide if the rate is within that parameter that's being set, and then approve, approve that bond sale. And then at the next, immediate next meeting of the board, then the whole board would approve that, approve that sale, approve the sale of the bonds. I don't know if that answers your question?
I think so, like, how do we determine the final rate, though? Like, that moment that we decide to move forward with the sale, like?
Okay, sure, so it is a bid process, and so when you look at what happened today in those sales today, the three different sales today for, through Ellers, there, you know, there are four to five to six different bidding companies that bid on these bonds, so Bank of America, Baird, et cetera, several different companies. So in that situation, we're gonna choose the low bid, whichever one gives us the, the most favorable rate.
Yep, that makes sense. Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Madam Chair. Tim, you indicated that the parameters resolution was gonna, they're gonna increase the TIC rate, which is the rate that they'll award the bid on, to 370, right?
Right, yeah.
And in the information that you sent out earlier today to everybody, based on today's current market, that TIC rate is 370? Can read it right? 309? Thank you. I think it's 309, so if I'm reading their information correctly. So, I mean, we are literally pretty much right on top of what our original threshold was.
Yes, yeah, we're very, very close.
And then they're projecting a savings of approximately 1.4 million, to base, if things happen today, based on some comparables, correct?
Correct, yep.
And, yeah, okay. That's helpful, yeah, I just want to make sure that, that's what I understood it to be. Thank you.
Good bet. Your, when we reissue these bonds, is it another 10-year hold sort of fixed cycle, or we can't refinance those, even if rates drop off in a month, we're stuck with those rates for 10 years?
That's a great question. I'm trying to remember, because there are certain times that we can refinance, that we can call the bonds. And I don't recall if I've got the call features, but I can, I can find that out and send out that information to the board.
I think I, I might be able to.
You might have.
So I think, so the proposed refinancing goes out to 2032, so that's eight years. And so I highly, I doubt that they're going to have a call feature on this bond issue, which to me would make sense to not have them callable within the next eight years, just because there's not going to be enough juice to refinance again where things are. But, yeah, based on that schedule.
I think having, having that call feature would raise the rates that, from the bidders, most likely, correct?
Yeah, I think if it would be less than 10 years, or if it'd be less than eight years, it would probably raise the interest rate. Yes, that's a good point.
Those the consideration that we're making, then, like, almost making a bet that the interest rate that we get today is going to be lower than a year from now or two years from now, or are we in a position where we have to refinance that today?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't have to take any action, but so, but these, the bonds that we have currently are 5%. So we're able to bring that down. And so what we're going to, going to get is we're going to get, as, you know, if you kind of recall, that discussion was back in September, so it was quite a while ago. What we're getting is some savings there, interest rate savings, and also lower, lower impacts for, you know, any potential referendum. So we're going to get, get two things going that are, that are going to be helpful. Sure.
And in really simple terms, is it taking action now because of the uncertainty of maybe what the future might look like, or what's projected? Or is, I'm just curious as to why today versus-
You know, if you, if you had the crystal ball, you might be able to answer that question.
I'd probably be retired right now, right?
You, yes, you would, absolutely. And I think one of the things that we saw was, you know, we, we looked at, the reason we picked January is a couple of different reasons. When we were, when we were talking about this in September, we were also hearing that the Fed was going to reduce their rates, a rate move in November and a rate move in December. And those two things happened, but we didn't see, we didn't see that rate drop. And then the other thing that happens a lot of times, but not all of the time, is January's a good month to, to go to market with the bonds, because sometimes there's not as much demand out there, so it results in a lower interest rate. When we do this on the 22nd, we'll see. It's kind, it's kind of one of those things. I'd love to tell you that we'd know exactly what that rate's going to be, but rates have jumped around, and they, they have been, I guess, a little unpredictable when, when we look at the Fed actions, and then, but we'll see what happens. We still have, we still have some January left, so possibly we'll, we'll see the rates. It certainly would be great.
Can I ask a fairly ignorant question? Let's say we approve a motion here tonight, and something drastically changes in the next three weeks. Then what?
If we saw rates go way up, then we would do nothing. We'd, but we'd have to, we'd have to do that before, I think we'd have to do that before the 22nd. No, if, and the 22nd is an estimated sales date. We have to, with the disclosure agreement, we have to get through all of that, and before the bonds are issued, so that's why we move that date back. But we'd, we'd have to, we, we, you're not locked into doing anything. You could just say, okay, we're just going to leave everything the way it is, and we'll make the payments on the bonds as they are. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't call, we wouldn't call those bonds. So, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm going to look to Paul for if there's anything else I should be asking on this.
So the, the threshold parameters resolution sets a TIC rate of 370, but there's also a savings threshold, it's still in there or not?
Yes, yeah, there's still-
And that's what? Was it a million that we set?
Well, what we did, when, when we looked at this, we, we did concentrate on tax impact, because again, looking at what was most important from, from the board perspective. So I, I would have to go back and look. It's prob, it's not going to be what it was because of the rate increase. And to restructure this and kind of maintain that tax impact, we're also pushing the number of years out, payments out, a few years, extending that out a few years to 2032, so.
So to answer your question, Kelly, we can take bids on those bonds on the 22nd. We look at the results. If the results are within the parameters we set, then we've got a piece of paper that says so-and-so can sign on the board's behalf and essentially lock in those rates. If, if something happens between now and then, and we still, we can still take bids, we evaluate them, and we've got that resolution in place, and if it exceeds, if it exceeds that, then we don't accept.
Yeah, and then we're in great-
Right, right.
And market rates for these track as a discount to US Treasuries? Or does it, does it use, do you see a similar movement between the Treasury rates and the bond price?
I would probably defer, Paul, maybe you could answer that question.
Yeah, so they do track somewhat to Treasuries, but there's typically a lag, and it's, and the spread is not always consistent. It changes. And so that's why you saw what, you know, when the Fed moved, you did see that the muni market didn't, the muni tax exempt market didn't track the Treasury market like we expected it, like people would have thought it would. And so why, that's why things kind of went sideways. But answer to your question is yes, it tracks it. But you can't spit out a 80% every day, that's not how it works. But generally speaking, it tracks.
Bonds paid off in eight years?
In, well, I'd probably need to look at that schedule again, and I, I apologize. I don't, let me take a look here. So, you know, so we're looking at, make sure I've got the news, the proposed schedule here. So, yeah, so we're, we're paying on this, we're paying principal and interest, both.
Would be paid off.
Pardon? Yes, yeah. Some bonds, we do, when we structure and restructure, sometimes we're taking, you know, we're just paying interest for a few years, and then starting, and then principal starts to kick in later.
Any other questions? Okay. I need a motion for the approval of the resolution stating the intention of the school board to issue general obligation school building refunding bonds, Series 2025A, in the aggregate principal amount of approximately 22,360,000, and taking other actions with respect.
I'll move.
Peterson.
Second.
Second by Director Donna. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, and with that, I just need a motion for adjournment. Moved by Director Regan. Second by Director Peterson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.